Good afternoon, everyone. The Clayton County Board of Commissioners Special Call Board Meeting is now called to order. The date is June 24, 2025, and the time is 2:00 PM. At this time, we will do roll call. We will start with District 1.
Here.
District 3.
Present.
District 2.
Here.
And District 4.
Present.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we will not have an invocation, but we will go into our Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next will be our adoption of the agenda. At this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion at this time? All right, we'll move on to the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next, we will move into our public comment. Tahija?
Citizens will be given a three-minute maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please note that all public comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters of which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain a decorum and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting and using obscene language. Following 30 minutes of hearing from the public, the Board of Commissioners will allow the remainder of citizens who have signed up to be heard at the next Tuesday business meeting.
All right, first, we have on the agenda Tim Swett, our fire chief.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you today and speak specifically to ask you to reconsider my fiscal year 26 EMS budget request. When I speak of EMS, I speak to the emergency medical services that we provide to the community, which basically constitutes 14 full-time ambulances, the associated personnel, and the cost to provide that service. As part of my fiscal year 26 EMS budget submission, I requested an additional $1,595,802 to add a 15th full-time transport unit to our fleet. The justification for that is as follows. The last expansion to EMS was done in fiscal year 2019, when we were approved for two additional med units, taking us from 12 to 14 back in 2019. With that, the funding, we were only partially funding when it comes to the personnel to staff those two units. So part of the 1.595 request also includes the addition of two additional sergeants for those two units that were approved in fiscal year 19, which were partially funded. In addition to that, I am asking for funding to stand up our 15th full-time transport unit. Once again, our last expansion was done in 2019. First, those two units were partially funded. With the addition of this 15th med unit, which will be Med 12, and will be assigned to Station 12 on Mondays Mill Road in District 3, we will see a much-needed expansion take place with the increased call volume. From fiscal year 2018 to 2024, our organization has seen a 15.5% call volume increase. Additionally, Clayton County has added 8,094 new residential properties during this same timeframe, which also results in an estimated 23,201 new citizens added to our community. Of that growth, the 8,094 new properties and the 23,000 additional residents to our community, 53.6% of that growth has occurred in District 3. So once again, the ask is for the 15th transport unit, which will reside in District 3 at our fire station number 12, and help us meet the demands of our public. Believe it or not, Tuesday is our busiest day of the week. When I walked in the door here, I had four ambulances in service. I'm not sure where I sit right now, but Tuesday is our busiest day of the week. Calendar year 2024, we've seen our first call volume decrease overall in the last decade. A lot of that's contributed to our 4C team that works forward-facing in the community to take those calls out of the 911 system and treat them. However, calendar year 24, we saw a 1.2% increase in transports. Once again, call volume came down, transports went up. So we only have 14 units. When those units are fully deployed on calls, then we have to reach out to surrounding partners to support us. If we can't find someone to back us up, then we have to wait for a transport unit to become available, to then complete that call and transport that patient to the hospital. So in closing, I just ask that you please reconsider.
Thank you, Chief. Your time is up.
Thank you.
I hate to cut you off.
You're fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Next will be Ms. Pat Sebo.
Short. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me here. I appreciate it very much.
Ms. Sebo, just state your name and calendar position.
Okay. Pat Sebo Hand, 175 Church Street, City of Jonesboro.
All right, thank you.
I am the Board Chair for Family Literacy of Georgia, and we have been in existence for, I've been the Board Chair for at least four or five years. I'm here to speak on the fact that I got word just earlier today that there's the possibility of closing two more of our libraries. I pray that is not true. We are already down one since the county demolished the one here in Jonesboro. This map right here, you can go to Unite for Literacy. This is a book desert map. This area right here that is orange, that is Clayton County. We are below average when it comes to books, supplying books, and the access to books in this state and in this nation. We should be up much higher than what we are. And it's a shame, if it is true, that you want to close two more of them. I think that you could better serve the community by finding funds somewhere else that you need to underwrite your budget. I hope that it's not true. I don't have room at my house for another 150 bricks that I took from the Jonesboro library when it was demolished. Libraries are not obsolete. Former Commission Chair said that they were. They're not. There's so many wonderful things that happen in our libraries. So I really do hope that it's not true, that you're not considering closing two of them, and I hope that if it is, you'll reconsider because our children desperately need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board, and my fellow citizens. What I'm about to speak on right now is of, I feel, of great importance, and that importance is public safety. Not just in one area, let me remind you. It is not just the Fire Department. It is not just the Police Department. It is not just the Sheriff's Department. It also entails our court system and the expediency of which the innocent will be set free, and the people who are guilty be locked up immediately. This all concerns our public safety, and that is what I consider very, very important at the top of the list in moving our county forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. Next will be Mr. Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, District 3, Clayton County. Mr. Garber, should I wait?
No, you can go.
Okay, you won't be timing myself?
No, you're on there already. You can go on, keep going.
Mr. Garber stole my thunder, but I did speak about this before. My major concern is public safety. That's where I start. Nobody's going to come to Clayton County if it's an unsafe county, so it starts with the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, the judges, prosecutors, DAs, all of that. It also, I keep hearing about the need for beautification. Well, that starts with making sure our code enforcement is fully staffed, okay, and they can perform their duties to keep the county beautiful, not coming up with gimmicks. Especially one of the things that I'm disturbed about, we spend money or time on idiot projects that, well, it's going to make $100 million in five years, and in the process, what are we supposed to do? Because the only thing I will do a property tax on is safety. Everything else has to be prioritized. Seems that this Board has got their priorities out of order. One of the things that disturbs me is when I hear consultants being terminated and having to be paid their, I mean, who signs a contract like that? If I terminate you for cause, I got to pay you. That's just plain ridiculous. Or you're paying consultants that don't consult. Now, the last thing I spoke about was the need to make sure we fund the Development Authority. I had Economic Development come here, and they talked about the need and the projects and the direction they're going. They haven't delivered anything. And Mr. Garber even said, whoa, we got more small-box stores, we have Dollar Trees. No. Uh-uh. If you're going to do anything in terms of directing this county, it can't be with idiot projects like Sports Council or Sports, give it to the Development Authority. I've been to several of their meetings. They have a very good staff there. Excuse me, does this thing work?
I got it. You can keep going. You've got 25 more seconds.
Oh, well, I'm done. It's just, I tried to find if there was a tier lower than one, because I think that's where we're going. I think this petty vindictiveness that some of the members on this Board has is insulting and disrespectful to the people of this county.
Thank you, Mr. Gooden. You have an awesome day. Also, to Ms. Sebo, I did want to let you know that we don't have any closings of the libraries. I did check as you were speaking, so I wanted to make sure that you knew that we don't have any closings as of now. So I will come back and let you know at the end of the meeting, but that's one thing we don't ever want to do, because everybody needs to read, and everybody needs to, we need to keep reading going on from the time they come, they're born, our children are born, until our seniors, you know, come to the library. So we would just want to make sure that you know we, our concern with reading is going to continue on. Thank you. All right. Next, we will move on to our consent agenda. At this time, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion at this time, Board members?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Reeves.
When were the Commissioners given the updated agenda that included the items on the consent agenda?
That was sent out by our clerk, and Tahija, when did you send that agenda out?
The agenda was sent out on yesterday.
Thank you.
Via email.
I have questions, I guess, for Attorney Reed about...
Attorney Reed, please come forward. Thank you.
So when we discussed having a special call meeting to talk about the budget, I wasn't aware that there were other agenda items that could be added to the agenda. So I guess my question is, why were these, especially because these are contracts, why were these items, these contract approvals, added to this special call meeting?
So anytime the Board has a special call meeting, any item that is for consideration can be added to that particular agenda. While the initial, the main purpose of this today's meeting is a budget hearing, because you all are here, if there's an item that needs to be discussed or decided, that can be added to the agenda. As far as why these particular ones were added to the agenda, I'll have to defer to the Purchasing Director or the Director of Central Services.
Ms. Rogers, will you come forward, please?
Good afternoon, Chairwoman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yes, ma'am.
Can you just go over a little bit about each of these contracts? I mean, we were only given the 24 hours notice that they were going to be on the agenda, and we have to either approve or deny them. So can I get some more information about them?
Sure. So in Central Services, as we work through our contracts, as we get close to the deadline for the end of the fiscal year, the requests, we knew that there was a special call meeting, so we made a request internally to see if we could add those items, because we had so many documents and paperwork. So that was the request that was made. These are requisitions that were put in probably about six to eight weeks ago, but just going through the contract cycle, you know, developing and getting those approved internally, that's where we're at today.
Okay. And then I have a question about where the funds are coming from for each of the contracts?
Yes, ma'am, and it should be a part, I don't know what your packet looks like, but it is inside of the packet. Each one does have its funding source. Once again, these were requisitions, and the money was already encumbered from this fiscal year. So each one, if you like, I can go through the item number and list the funding source, if you would like.
That's not necessary, thank you.
Okay.
All right, are there any other questions at this time, Board members? Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you.
All right, are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. The next item will be a budget presentation from our MCO, Ms. Angela Jackson.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. This is the FY26 proposed budget. The budget process began on November 21, 2024. Budget instructions and details were sent out to the departments. On December 5, 2024, we held a budget class for any department director and anyone else in their department that needed to attend. December 13, 2024, non-elected budgets were due to the COO's office. This was a new part of our process this year. On February 3, 2025, budget requests across the county were due. March 10, we began meetings with departments. Initially, they began with the Chair, the CFO, the COO, the DCOO, and the budget team. The process was changed, and we then continued meeting with the Budget Committee, the CFO, the COO, the DCOO, and the budget team. On June 17, we held our budget hearing as required by law. On June 24, the budget adoption is scheduled. Our proposed FY26 general fund budget is $335 million. It represents a 6% increase over the FY25 adopted budget, and a 3% decrease from the FY25 amended budget. The revenues in the proposed FY26 budget include property taxes at 63.7%, other taxes and assessments at 23.2%. The largest categories in other taxes and assessments would include local option sales tax, as well as insurance premium tax. License and permits represent 2.2% of the budget. Intergovernmental funds represent 1% of the budget. Contributions, 0.6%. Charges for services, 7.7%. Fines and forfeitures, 1.3%. Other revenues, 0.2%. Other financing sources, 0.1%. Expenses, general government makes up 30% of the budget, and includes such items as the Commissioner's Office, finance, IT, HR, central services, professional services, elections, fleet, refuse, buildings and maintenance, extension services, and other general government. Tax assessment and collections represent 2% of the budget, and includes the Tax Commissioner's Office, as well as the Tax Assessor's Office. Courts and law enforcement represent 37% of the budget, and includes Superior Court, State Court, probation services, magistrate court, juvenile court, probate court, clerk of Superior Court, clerk of State Court, the solicitor's office, the District Attorney's Office, the prison, and the sheriff's office. Public safety represents 21% of the budget, and includes police, EMS, and EMA. Transportation and development represents 2% of the budget. Library services represent 1% of the budget. Parks and senior services both combined represent 5% of the budget. Department budget requests totaled $409.6 million this year. The FY26 budget projected revenue totaled $335 million. Therefore, budget reductions of $74.6 million took place before the proposed budget was developed. Budget enhancements included in this budget, we added one police pilot and one police senior business systems administrator, and deleted three other police positions, as requested by the Police Department. We reclassified one signature events coordinator, added 39 sheriff's correctional officers, and one budget analyst. We added one assistant pension manager, and added one chief judge's supplement. There's a salary adjustment within the current proposed budget. People earning, employees earning less than $55,000 would receive an increase of 3.75%. Employees that earn between $55,000 and $1 to $80,000 would receive a 2.5% increase, and employees earning in excess of $80,001 would receive an increase of 1.25%. The increase would be effective July 5, 2025, based on the salary at June 30, 2025, and there is a typo here, must have been employed by the county and in effective pay status on January 30, 2025. Once again, that's a typo with January 1, it should say January 30. So you must have been employed by the county and in effective pay status to earn this salary adjustment on January 30, 2025. Local assistance grants totaling $900,000 are included in this budget. Capital. Capital is funded primarily through SPOLOST. Anticipated projects to be completed during FY26 include fire stations 1, 9, 15, and the headquarters clinic, the county records center, the small business incubator, the IT bunker, phases 3 and 4 of the Rivers Edge Walking Trail, the Police Department Training Facility, upgrades to concession stands at Marilla Lake City Park, Rum Creek Park, and Rex Park. The pictures illustrate the front and back of the building. The front of the building would be the concession stand, and the back would include restrooms for those parks. The Shellnut Senior Center renovations, the fleet maintenance facility expansion, district pocket parks, including District 1 at Alpine Lake, District 2 in Riverdale, District 3 in Jonesboro off Old Poston, District 4 in Jonesboro off Battle Creek, and the amphitheater at the International Park. Modular restrooms, as pictured, they will finalize the ground layout during FY26 for Bonanza, Grant Park, and Independence Park. Vehicles totaling $4 million are included in the SPOLOST 2021 budget. The FY25 net milage rate was $15.266 mils. The FY26 proposed general fund budget is based upon a net milage rate of $15.126 mils. The examples of the tax bills on the screen are for a home costing valued at $150,000. Currently, the average value of a home in Clayton County is $257,000, but we just did the example of the tax bill on the 150. Based on last year's rate, taxes paid to the county would be $970.60. Taxes based on the FY26 budget would total $963.60 for a $7 decrease in the taxes paid. However, the county would still need to advertise an increase in the milage rate, because that rate is higher than the rollback milage. Amendment 1. I will now present five different amendments to the proposed budget, in which the Commissioners will choose which ones they would like to adopt with the proposed budget. Amendment 1 adds two TPO clerks and one TPO coordinator with related supplies and equipment to Superior Court's budget at a cost of $184,746. It would reduce the new correctional officers from 39 to 36 at a savings of $225,288, and it would increase overtime for the Sheriff's Office at a cost of $40,542. That's Amendment 1. Amendment 2 would reduce travel for the Chair and each Commissioner by 5,000 for a savings of $25,000. It would reduce advertisement expense within the communications budget of $75,000. It would reduce travel and dues and subscription within the COO's office, totaling $40,000 for travel, $40,660, and $860 for dues and subscription. It would reclass two fiduciary clerks from 181 to a pay grade 21 step 1 at a cost of It also would reclass the Human Resources Director's salary from a pay grade 38 step 24 to a pay grade 38 step 28 at a cost of $9,950. It would increase other contract service fees for the Circuit Public Defender's Office in the amount of $64,104. It would increase other contract service fees for Juvenile Court in the amount of $25,000, and it would increase emeritus and pro temp fees for Juvenile Court in the amount of $25,000, maintaining the proposed general fund budget total of $335 million. That's Amendment 2. Amendment 3 would reduce the sheriff's part-time salaries by $700,000, reduce the related FICA Medicare benefits in the amount of $53,550, would reduce jail-op medical service fees in the amount of $5 million, reduce the budget by 36 correctional officers, the new correctional officers, for a cost savings of $2,703, $703,456. It would reduce transport expense by $700,000, reduce sheriff's office supplies by $15,000, reduce sheriff group insurance benefits by $200,000, reduce sheriff other contract service fees in the amount of $627,994, and it would move the budget analyst from the sheriff's office to finance at a cost savings of $73,228. It would add that budget analyst back to the finance, which would be assigned solely to the sheriff's office and would reside in the sheriff's office at a cost of $108,881. The clerk of Superior Court, it would add one deputy clerk, clerk 1, at a cost of $57,447, and it would increase office supplies for the Ethics Board in the amount of $25,000. It would reclass the Human Resource Director's salary from a pay grade 38 step 24 to a 38 28 at a cost of $9,950. It would increase food and dietary for the Commissioner's Office in the amount of $3,600. And because this amendment rolls taxes back to the rollback rate, we would have to reduce the amount of taxes collected, because the rate would not be as high. And so then that's Item 7, where real property taxes, personal property, and public utility taxes are reduced to the rollback rate, which would then adopt the budget at $325 million. That's Budget Amendment 3. Budget Amendment 4 reduces the local assistance grants by $120,000 and increases land and improvements to address flooding for $120,000, which would maintain the adopted general fund budget of $335 million. Amendment 5 reduces, it deletes the office manager and administrative secretary positions under the Board of Commissioners at a savings of $146,150. It deletes the part-time administrative secretary for a savings of $21,029. It deletes other contract service fees in the amount of $45,800. It deletes promotional expense in the amount of $25,000, reduces dues and subscriptions by $40,000, deletes food and dietary supplies in the amount of $2,250. It deletes... It deletes other contract service fees under the COO's Office in the amount of 1,200. It deletes promotional expense under the COO's Office in the amount of 5,750 dollars, deletes the COO's Training and Travel Expense in the amount of 34,500. It reduces the COO's dues and subscriptions in the amount of 6,560 dollars. It deletes the Chairwoman's miscellaneous program supplies in the amount of 5,000, deletes District 1, 2, 3, and 4 in the amount of 5,000 each. It deletes the Communications Administrator, Communications Administrative Assistant, Communications Manager, and two Communications and Marketing Coordinators for savings of 485,773 dollars, deletes Communications Advertisement Expense in the amount of 100,000, deletes Communications Training and Travel Expense in the amount of 20,850 dollars, reduces Communications dues and subscriptions in the amount of 10,383 dollars, reduces Communications Office Supplies in the amount of 40,000, deletes Communications Food and Dietary Supplies in the amount of 3,000, deletes the SAF Attorney's Office Equipment Rental in the amount of 1,596 dollars, deletes the SAF Attorney's Uniform Allowance in the amount of 650 dollars, deletes the SAF Attorney's dues and subscriptions in the amount of 5,120 dollars, and deletes the SAF Attorney's Office Supplies in the amount of 2,000. For Probate Court, it reclasses two fiduciary clerks from Pay Grade 18 Step 1 to a Pay Grade 21 Step 1 for a cost of 17,466 dollars. It increases surveying supplies for Transportation and Development in the amount of 200,000, increases roads, bridges, and improvements in the amount of 600,000, reclasses a Chief Engineer for a cost of 12,887 dollars, reclasses the Civil Engineer 2s and the Civil Engineer 3s, and it deletes a Civil Engineering Inspector, deletes a Crew Worker, three Equipment Operator 1s, and one Equipment Operator 2. For Fleet, it reclasses 12 Fleet Technicians at for a cost of 229,856 dollars, reclasses one Fleet Technician Apprentice at a cost of 58,195 dollars. And for Community Development, it deletes the Community Development Training and Travel Expense in the amount of 8,500 dollars. It reduces Community Development Office Supplies in the amount of 10,000, reduces Community Development other contract service fees in the amount of 345,000. It deletes the Planning and Zoning Training and Travel Expense in the amount of 3,000, deletes Planning and Zoning Office Supplies in the amount of 7,000. And for Parks and Recreation, it reduces Parks and Recreation Admin Recreation Program Expense by 25,000, reduces the International Park Recreation Program Expense in the amount of 17,438 dollars, reduces all of the Recreation Program Expenses within Parks and Rec by half to include Green Space, Virginia Gray Recreation Center, South Clayton Recreation Center, Jim Huey Recreation Center, Carr Road Naza Recreation Center, the Athletics Recreation Program Expense, Spivey Recreation Program Expense, and the Spivey Splash Water Park Recreation Program Expense. It reduces the R&amp;M Buildings for the International Park, Green Space Park Service, and it also reduces the recreational, the R&amp;M recreational area for Park Service, the International Park, Virginia Gray, Jim Huey, and Spivey Splash. It increases R&amp;M for Buildings by 580,147 dollars, reclasses a Senior Assistant Solicitor 1 from a Pay Grade 29 Step 3 to a Pay Grade 31 Step 9 at a cost of 18,276 dollars, adds a Deputy Chief Assistant Solicitor General, Pay Grade 34 Step 19, and deletes a Chief Assistant Solicitor General at a cost of 17,179 dollars. It adds a Senior Accusation Specialist at a cost of 77,875 dollars, reclasses a Chief Investigator from a Pay Grade 33 Step 3 to a Pay Grade 34 Step 14 at a cost of 25,976 dollars, and reclasses the Chief of Staff from a Pay Grade 34 Step 8 to a Pay Grade 34 Step 20 at a cost of 21,099 dollars. The Budget Amendment is balanced, and the adopted General Fund Budget would remain at 335 million. That concludes the Budget Amendments, and now, if there are any questions?
Thank you. All right. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-132 to include Budget Amendments 1, 3, and 4.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. That's my motion.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion at this time?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Reeves?
Can you repeat those Budget Amendments that are being added in your motion?
1, 3, and 4. All right. And what I'll do is just go through, Commissioner Reeves. Commissioner Allen, do you have any discussion at this time?
Yes. Angela, I would like for you to please answer this question to me with a yes or no, only two choices. Currently, at the balanced budget for the proposed FY26, do we have a $10 million shortfall?
A $10 million shortfall?
Yes. At, yes or no?
It depends on whether you want to adopt the...
No, 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 no. We're not talking about, at the current proposed, at the proposed with the current milage rate, do we have a $10 million shortfall? Yes or no?
With the milage rate being the same as last year...
What you proposed.
Which is, which is the milage rate keeping it the same as last year. With last year's milage rates, then there is not, but if you decide to reduce it...
Thank you, thank you. No, 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 no. I want to make it clear. At the budget we have now, there is no $10 million shortfall. Yes or no?
It depends on which, which milage rate. If we want to go...
Okay, so if you're saying with the current net milage rate at 15.266...
Hold on, let me just ask a question.
Okay.
I emailed you, and the email, we're not talking about if we're rolling back the milage rate.
Okay.
If we keep everything the same, as it is now, what you proposed, do we have a $10 million shortfall? Yes or no?
Not with the net milage rate.
No, so no. We do not have a $10 million shortfall. So let's make that clear, because members of this board decides to put out misinformation to the public stating that we have a $10 million shortfall. So as a representative of District 3, I would like my citizens to know, we currently do not have a $10 million shortfall. However, if this board decides to use the rollback rate, there is going to be a 9.8 million cut. At that time, we will have a shortfall to prevent from advertising a property tax increase. So currently, at the proposed budget, which you guys saw today, there is no $10 million shortfall, okay? And I want to make that clear, and I want to make that for the record. Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, Commissioner, you want to go next?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
With what has been moved, the motion that has been made, will that require us to advertise a tax increase?
No, ma'am. It would not require you to advertise a tax increase as long as those numbers are based on the digest received on April 17th. Based on that digest and the growth and reassessment reports that were received at that time, the motion made by the Chair would not advertise a tax increase. Correct.
Okay. I just want to be sure.
Commissioner Davis?
To not advertise that, a tax increase, do we need to reduce this number, and by how much?
With the motion, it reduces that number by the 9.8 that would be required.
9.8 is necessary to not advertise a tax increase.
Correct.
Okay. Anything less than that, we have to advertise this as a tax increase to our citizens.
We would in August when it's time to present the milage.
Okay. So right now, we're still, are we operating at the proposal, at the rollback rate or the current milage rate as it stands?
With the motion, the motion was to approve Amendments 1, 3, and 4, then that would put us back at the rollback rate, if that's what you're asking. The Proposed Budget Book was based on the 15.26 mils. But the motion that was made would take us back to the rollback rate.
Okay. With, we had a 6% increase in this budget, correct? We are 6, we have a 3% decrease in the amended budget, from the amended budget.
Yes.
Can you explain that a little further, what that truly means?
The 3% decrease from the amended budget, the amended budget included a, I'm sorry, a budget amendment that added money in to cover the litigation. So that's why this budget is less than the amended budget because we can't budget for the litigation. The 18.1 million dollar increase, the 6% increase over the adopted budget, the three highest categories was 60 million for the Sheriff's Office, 6 million for the Police Office, and a 4.4 million dollar salary adjustment that's included in this budget that was not, of course, in the 25 budget.
Okay. Because what I'd like to see, whichever way we go, I would like to see a, perform a mid-year review to where we can begin to look at what the, what our general fund is looking like, what our revenues are looking like, and begin to look at what are the department's needs going forward here. But I think to, we want to be very careful and cognizant of cutting budgets anywhere. One of the big things for me was to make sure all of our employees were given some type of salary increase. That was number one on the agenda, but also two, it's to public safety. And how do we begin to look not only at this budget, but 2027 budget as well to find, figure out where we have to focus on?
Okay. All right. And then I'll start back on to the right of me. Commissioner Reeves?
Yes. Interim CFO, when did the Board of Commissioners receive these Budget Amendments for discussion today?
I think I started sending them out yesterday, but I think I received the last item for you. I can't remember, maybe it was like 5 or 6. So then they might have received them after hours, but they've been receiving them since yesterday as I was preparing them. As I got in the emails from the Board, I prepared them and sent them out.
So about 24 hours notice that we as a Board have had to review these Budget Amendments. Is that typical in the budgeting process that Commissioners have 24 hours to review Budget Amendments on a 335 million dollar, 335 million dollar budget?
It has been the practice here, but I can't prepare them until I receive them. So as I receive them from the Board, I prepare them and send them out. So once I receive them from the Board, I type them up, I send them back out to the individual who sponsored the Budget Amendment to make sure that they agree with everything that I put on it, and once I receive the okay, then I send all of the amendments out to the Board at that time.
I understand. And within the, within the amendments that where the Commissioners make their recommendations for the Budget Amendment, does it also in the amendment include how the budget has been rebalanced within those reductions or additions?
Yes. That each amendment is balanced, and so if you look, the...
But how? Like what is, where is the detail and how each, how each amendment rebalances the budget?
Let me go back to the first one, and I can show you. So when you're looking at this, it adds a cost of 184,746. In parentheses, that means you're subtracting, you're decreasing in expense. So the expense was decreased in the amount of 225,288 dollars, because that's higher than the 184,746. 40,542 dollars were then placed in overtime to maintain a balanced budget at 335,79,665 dollars. And that's on each amendment. It shows the increases as well as the decreases.
And is it the decision of the Commissioner or the Finance Department how the, how additions or amendments within each amendment is, is balanced? So does a Commissioner say, I want to move X amount of money from this department and move it to another department, or is there an opportunity for a Commissioner to say, well, if we reduce our expenditures, we can add additional funding to, let's say, our fund balance, like our rainy day fund, so that the Board has a cushion in uncertain times?
Each Commissioner was supposed to tell me how they wanted to balance the budget. If they made it, if they increased the budget somewhere, they needed to tell me where they wanted to decrease it, and vice versa.
And when were those instructions given to the Board?
Each time I talked to the Board, and so when they sent their emails, and when I spoke to them on the phone, they told me how they wanted them to be balanced.
My questions, this entire budget conversation has been around the process and how this process, while you gave the timeline that it started in November and in January, in essence, the budget was published, what, on the 10th? And as a member of the Budget Subcommittee, I didn't see the final rebalanced budget until the 10th, when that book was sent out. So since June 10th to today, June 24th, the Commissioners as a whole have had about two weeks to review this budget to be able to understand how the amount of money that we're bringing in in revenues, which the majority of which are from property taxes, how the amount of revenues that we are bringing in are going to balance with the amount of expenditures that we are spending. And we've had two weeks to do that and 24 hours to read Budget Amendments. And so my problem is that this process does not allow us as a Board to be able to review these numbers and have a better grasp and understanding of where Clayton County dollars are going.
The state law says that once I provide a budget book to the Commissioners, I must also make it available to the public, and it has to be advertised and placed in certain locations so that all public can view that document. As a member of the Budget Committee, we met for months with that same book that you have in your hand, and we made adjustments to those numbers that we made during that meeting. And so...
But let me, let me ask this. Did the Budget Subcommittee, did we receive a detailed comparison of the original budget discussion versus what was cut? So I have two sheets of paper. This was the original budget during the Budget Subcommittee Discussions. This is the sheet after the rebalance, so that I could go line by line and see, okay, this money has been allocated to this department, this money has been moved from this line item, this position has been added, this position has been cut. So when in the process did we as a Board receive both these levels of, of information to make a decision to say, okay, well, this department had this amount of money cut, where are we going to find that additional funding for that?
Once again, throughout the months of meeting, every meeting we were in, the Budget Committee, which was the purpose, was to provide me direction, because I can't set policy, that's what the Board does.
But for us to be able to set policy, we need to be able to see the numbers.
Absolutely.
And so that, that is my frustration, because I have been asking to receive the budget so that I could go through and look at each of these line items and see, how much money are we spending? How much money are the departments requesting? I mean, we had a department head who had to come today during the budget adoption and speak during public comment. At the last budget meeting, we had two other department heads. When are the opportunities for we as a Board to be able to discuss the budget, for our departments to be able to discuss the budget so that they can say, this is how much money I need, this is how much money the county has, and to be able to allocate that money appropriately? We've only had two weeks for that. We have one budget hearing, we have the budget adoption today, we have five Budget Amendments, and that's the end of the conversation? Like that, that is what the process is.
And Commissioner Reeves, we're gonna, we're gonna, I understand your frustration. We're gonna wrap it up from here. Angela, you can answer that question, and then I'm gonna move on to Commissioner Allen.
That is, that is, no. Point of order.
Point, well, at this...
This is a discussion.
I understand it's a discussion.
I have questions, and I would like them to be answered.
You have discussed it for almost 10 minutes now. And so again, we're going to move on.
I have some additional questions.
Mr. Reeves, can I...
Madam, interim CFO.
Excuse me. Again, we're gonna move, I'm moving on to the next person, which will be Commissioner Allen.
Point of order.
Commissioner Allen.
Point of order.
Commissioner Allen, do we need to vote to move on at this time?
Well, she has raised the point of order as to whether you, whether it's appropriate to cut off her...
And you can answer that question?
That's a decision that she...
Or I can just call for the question and let the Board vote on it?
I think it would be appropriate for her to at least get the question that she asked and have the interim CFO answer that.
Okay.
And then see if... And then see if there's anything else that comes from that, rather than just stopping her before she gets-
Okay, that's fine. We'll, we'll go forward.
There was a calendar for the budget process submitted. The calendar was developed back in November, and it was shared with the board. Anytime the board wants to change the budget process, they are welcome to do so, and we asked that question. Each department and elected official came in to the budget meetings and expressed their desires for the FY26 proposed budget. Because there is a limited amount of revenue, we can't grant every department director or office everything that they so desire. So decisions must be made, and the budget committee, the commissioners on that committee, made those decisions when the representatives were in, expressing what they wanted. You either said, reduce this line, or increase this line. And then as that was decided by the budget committee, the budget team did as they were instructed to do.
My response, as a member of the budget subcommittee, I do not feel, as, I do not feel that my suggestions and recommendations to the budget made it through the rebalance. And this budget book that was published does not fully include, at least I feel, my suggestion as, as the member of the budget subcommittee. Because there's this conversation back and forth about the nine eight, nine point eight million dollars, I asked point blank, specifically, when we got our reassessment of property values from Emmett George, if that property, if that increase in the amount of revenue collected would mean that we would have to increase, an increase in our property tax assessment, which meant more money coming from the pockets of Clayton County taxpayers out of their property taxes. If that was factored in to this budget document before it was printed, I never received a response.
Commissioner Reeves, there were several occasions, because I couldn't even load the budget document without getting a response to the question, do we want to base these revenues based on a net milage rate of fifteen point two six six? The first day I asked, you said, do I have to respond today? And I said, no, ma'am. You came back into the next meeting, and I said, I have to have a response, because I can't build a budget without knowing what you want to do, you meaning the budget committee, what you would like to do as far as the net milage rate, because you can't build any revenues without knowing that information. And you said, proceed with the fifteen point two six six.
And one email that you said, mentioned that it might include, it might suggest that we would have to advertise a property tax increase. Nine point eight million dollars is hypothetical money that the county has not collected. For the past five years, Clayton County has increased its expenses year by year, the same amount of money that Clayton County has been, has been increasing the revenue collected. That is what is happening right now. I have gone through five years of budgets, and the expenses that Clayton County has been spending on services, on programming, on concerts, on whatever, has increased at the same time that our revenues have increased. So my question is, how do we, as a county, how are we going to balance paying for these increases in services without shifting the financial burden on the residents? Because asking in one email and in two conversations in the budget subcommittee about whether or not we're going to keep the milage rate or go back to the milage rate, there is a better explanation for it. Do we, do we, as a body, want to continue exploiting the residents of Clayton County by continuing them, continuing to ask them to pay higher property taxes as we continue to expend, increase our expenditures? We are spending more money every year, and there's never been a conversation from this board to discuss why we are spending more money and where that money is coming from.
Any amendment that increases the appropriations of any budget, FY25 or FY26, is brought before this board for them to approve or reject. If it is rejected, then those funds are not spent. If it is approved, then those funds are spent. No one in the finance department has the authority to increase appropriations, only the governing authority per state law. But I am willing to change the budget process however this board would like to see it.
I understand that, that ship has, has sailed. Can you, can you please repeat the motion on the floor?
All right. Again, the motion on the floor is to approve Resolution 2025 dash one thirty-two with amendments one, three, and four. All right.
There was no, there was no second, but-
There was a second.
There was?
Yes.
Can I offer something to this? Can we, and I guess this, I don't know if it's a legal question or not, can we vote on each of these five separately? And then begin to, the ones that are voted in, we then vote on the budget collectively with those?
You are adopting the budget-
Correct.
And so you would need to make a motion to adopt the budget with a particular amendment. If that fails, then you could do another motion to adopt the budget with another amendment, which would either pass or fail. So right now-
And we do that five times.
The one that's before, well, not necessarily, because right now on the floor is a motion to adopt the budget with amendments one, three, and four, if I remember right. And so if that does not pass, then there'll need to be another amendment, another motion to adopt the budget with another proposal.
I'm looking at this two ways. One, with what Commissioner Reeves has said, we have to remember that. This whole new budget process was put in after the interviews with all of the departments were taking place. So we weren't privy to all of them. I believe that the process, we might need to look at, but the process was not going to be all it could fully have been if we'd have started this at the beginning. So I do understand where she's going with that. For me, it's, I want to be sure that we are not advertising a tax increase to these citizens. That's, that's the, the major piece here for me. But looking at all five of these amendments, you know, I've got, you know, I look at them, some yes, some no, but then there's some we have small slight issues with. And it sounds to me, correct me if I'm misquoting Attorney Reed, if we begin, if we vote on one of these amendments, that's it? That's the one that's carrying the whole budget for the next year?
One, three, and four.
Right now, yes. Right now, the motion on the floor is to, to adopt the budget with the budget amendments one, three, and four. If that motion passes, that is the budget for 2026.
And that is the budget that we're not-
And we can't go back and amend the amended.
Well, I mean-
And I guess for me, because it goes back to what I said earlier, I really want to see a mid-year review from a performer basis, to make sure that all departments are staying healthy. That's, that's what it is. We, we're gonna have a lot that takes place, and we have amendments that come up all the time throughout the year. And so my thing is if we begin to say, and I'm just throwing this out there, in October, we will have a mid-year, mid-year review to begin to discuss these items again, whether we need to reallocate funding to those departments, or begin, they're not using them, to begin to push them back, pull them back, I'm sorry.
That can be done, whether you all, regardless of how you vote on what budget is adopted, having a mid-year review can be done regardless.
Correct. But we've not had one, really. I don't want to say at all. I mean, have we, that we've had an organized mid-year review? Have we had one, C.O.? We have? Okay.
And you can process budget amendments anytime you would like.
Correct. Correct.
Question.
All right. So what Commissioner Davis just said?
Mid-year review is a great idea. However, rolling back the milage rate, there will be less money collected. So when these department heads come back for budget amendments, where will the money come from?
That is a good question. It will have to be determined at that point in time. If someone wants to do a budget amendment, once again, they always have to be balanced. So then a source has to be identified, whether collections have come in excess of what was projected, or whether there's been a donation, or something else has taken place, another force, or you reduce it from someone else's budget, a source has to be identified.
Right. So I can only speak for the citizens of District Three, and I've spoken to over a thousand citizens in the last two weeks. And what I have been explaining to my citizens is that, yes, if we keep the budget at the current milage rate, what was presented for 2026, we will have to increase, I mean, excuse me, we will have to advertise a property tax increase. However, your milage rate is actually, what, lowering three percent?
It's lowered from fifteen point two six six to the fifteen point one two six.
It's a small percentage, okay? So I want to make it clear for District Three residents, and I want this on the record, okay? Commissioner Allen does not support rolling the rollback rate, reason being is that, I remember, two years ago, this board, I wasn't on it here yet, rolled back the milage rate, and the very next year, we had to increase the milage rate. And what Commissioner Davis said here, having a mid-year review, if we're cutting the budget, where will we get the money from to give those amendments to those departments who may need it out the fund balance, which is our savings account, which is digging a bigger hole for us? That is all. Thank you.
All right. At this time, are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Obstain.
All right. Any abstentions? Okay, one, one abstention. Please state your reason for abstention, abstaining, Commissioner Allen.
That is my reason.
All right. The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. Next, item eight, Attorney Reed, do we have a need for executive session?
Yes, on personnel and litigation.
All right. At this time, I need a motion to go into executive session for personnel and litigation.
So move.
All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. All right. Is there any discussion at this time? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. We were now going to executive session. We were now going to executive session to discuss litigation and personnel. Thank you. Good afternoon. At this time, I need a motion to return from executive session.
So move.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion at this time? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Next, at this time, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion at this time? All right. Are you ready for the vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you. You all have a wonderful afternoon.